I'm going to call today's meeting to order. It's July 5th, 2017. The meeting is now in session. This is our organizational meeting. May I have a motion to adopt the Code of Conduct?
So move that the board adopt the Code of Conduct.
Is there a second?
Second.
All righty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty, the motion carries five to zero. We will now sign the Code of Conduct. Let me take a minute while we're signing that to review it. As members of the Arlington School Board, we strive to be advocates for students and to approve public education and to that end, we show integrity in all matters and support the full development of all children in the welfare of the community. We will attend regularly scheduled board meetings. We will come informed so we can make great decisions. We will make our decisions based on facts and public input. We delegate the authority of the school system to the super authority for the administration of the school system to the superintendent and have a process for accountability. We encourage individual board members' expression of opinion and establish an open two-way communication process with all parts of the community. We'll bring about our desired change through legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing all the laws, state regulations, and court orders pertaining to the schools. We will refrain from using our board positions for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interest. I'm just going to take a second to sign. Pass it down to my colleagues. We'll be informed about current educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs. And first and foremost, the board will improve, will work to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the Arlington Public Schools. And so we therefore sign it to demonstrate our appropriate behavior and conduct as public school board members. And I believe we are now done with that Code of Conduct. I'd like to take a moment, though, and acknowledge that we are honored today to have the Chair of the County Board, as well as the Vice Chair of the County Board, Jay Facet and Katie Crystal, and Board Members Libby Garvey and John Veistat are here with us today. This speaks volumes regarding our collaboration with the county. And we also have County Manager Mark Schwartz here with us. We are just so appreciative that you took the time out to come today and show your support for the school system. Thank you for being here. All righty, I'm going to move on to the second item on our agenda, the election of the Chair of the School Board. I will now accept nominations for Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have just finished a very full agenda this past school year and have another one that's just as challenging ahead of us in the upcoming school year. And in working with the superintendent and his staff and with the community and with our colleagues on the County Board and in the county government, the School Board is going to need a chairperson who is proactive, visionary, and task-oriented to keep us organized and moving forward. And fortunately, we have that person. Barbara Cannonan has been an APS parent for nearly 20 years. During that time, her two sons have gone all the way through Arlington Public Schools from kindergarten through high school graduation. In addition to being a children's book author, Barbara is a longtime school and community leader. Before coming to the School Board, she served on the Early Childhood Advisory Committee, on the Math Advisory Committee, on the Advisory Council for Instruction, on the County Board's Fiscal Affairs Advisory Committee, and on the Board of the Ultimate League of Arlington, to name just a few of her community involvement roles. Since coming to the School Board in 2015, she has been deeply and successfully involved in the South Arlington Working Group that determined the seating for the new Alice West Fleet Elementary School, involved in the Whole Child Working Group, and in elevating Ultimate to the status of an official sport for both middle school and high school here in Arlington Public Schools, in the creation of the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee and the School Board's liaison to it along with James Lander. And this is to only name a few of her activities. Barbara is energetic, experienced, and skillful, and holds a vision for Arlington Public Schools that will serve us well as we take on the challenges of maintaining academic excellence while accommodating our relentlessly rising enrollment. And therefore, it is my privilege to nominate Dr. Barbara Cannonan for the position of Chair of the Arlington School Board for the 2017-2018 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Is there a second?
I second that wonderful motion. Thank you.
All righty. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, it has been moved and seconded that Barbara Cannonan be appointed as Chair of the School Board for the 2017-18 school year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Good afternoon, everybody. I will now accept nominations for Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations?
Madam Chair, I have a nomination. With your new leadership this coming year, I think that you need a strong, committed leader who will support you, someone who is a team player, transparent, engages our community as well as our board. And so I am pleased to nominate my colleague, Reed Goldstein, as Vice Chair of the School Board.
Thank you, Ms. Tlento. Are there any seconds?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? And seeing none, it has been moved and seconded that Reed Goldstein be appointed as Vice Chair of the School Board for the 2017-2018 school year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Goldstein. Looking forward to working with you as we go forward. We will have a few more comments in just a minute, but we have to finish our organizational agenda. There are a number of other organizational agenda items, numbers four through 14, before the board. May I have a motion to adopt these items?
I move the board adopt the organizational agenda, items four through 14.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adopting organizational agenda, items four through 14, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. In compliance with Section 22.1-253.13.7 of the Code of Virginia, it's a very complex code. As part of the organizational items, the School Board readopted existing policies for the administration of Arlington Public Schools. A current copy of the policies is posted on Arlington Public Schools' website at www.apsva.us/policies and is available to employees and to the public. For citizens who do not have online access, printed copies of the policies are available in the School Board Office, in the Office of School and Community Relations, in the Education Center, and at the Virginia Room in the Arlington Central Library. As part of that adoption, we adopted several items, including, very importantly, the appointment of our clerk, Ms. Elliott, as well as our deputy clerk, Claudia Mercado. Is Claudia here? There she is. And our office staff, Julianne Jones, is also here. Julianne, there she is. Thank you. We adopted a number of documents, including the schedule of our School Board meetings coming up this year. We did, as part of that adoption, it does not include the time, the start time, for our School Board meetings, but we are discussing starting earlier in the evening so that we can all be a little more alert and also keep, allow our staff to go home at a decent hour in the evening. And we're talking about following the County Board's process of having a recess time so that we don't go too late. We also adopted our School Board liaison assignments. We have liaisons to all of our schools and a number of committees. Most of those assignments are the same as they were last year. We tend to take assignments for two years. We rebalanced a little bit, but 90 percent of those assignments are the same as last year. And we adopted our speaker guidelines, again, very similar to what we've used in the past, but we did, again, following what our colleagues on the County Board do, we're now offering the opportunity for two-minute or three-minute slots, which, with two-minute slots going first. Okay. And with that, we will get to our regular meeting, and the first part of that is announcements. And as part of our announcements, I think we will have board comments. So I would like to start first with our outgoing Chair, Ms. Van Doren.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So good afternoon. Buenos tardes a todos. I've acknowledged our County Board colleagues, and I'm just so thrilled that you're here with us today. Thank you so much for coming. My remarks today are going to focus on three topics: gratitude, gumption, and caring. We had a very busy and successful year in Arlington Public Schools. It's one of continued growth and change. We were successful because of everyone in this room and in this community. Thank you. Thank you very much to my colleagues for the faith and trust that you placed in me to serve as Chair this past year, to lead this system during this time of change. Thank you for this opportunity. I am truly grateful and honored. Thank you to the Superintendent, Dr. Murphy, senior staff, and all APS staff for your tremendous hard work on behalf of our students and their families. Thank you to the School Board staff, Melanie Elliott, Claudia Mercado, and Julie Jones, Julianne Jones, who make our board office and meetings run seamlessly. And many, many thanks to the County Board for fully funding our budget, supporting our schools, and for collaborating with us in so many ways to ensure we have space and resources for our great schools. And thank you to all of our students for a successful year. You are why we do what we do. As my godmother, who was my guidance counselor, would say, "You've done yourselves proud." We are proud of you. And to the families, parents, and community members here and watching, thank you, thank you for your support of our students and our great system. On gumption. This year took gumption, which Merriam-Webster defines as a mix of courage, confidence, and common sense. We completed multiple major tasks in our three-to-five-year plan, which I love to hold up, that laid a firm base from which we will continue to build. We made many decisions, all of which were better because of strong community involvement and input. A few highlights of our successes this year include: a solid plan to have all students reading on grade level or making a year of progress annually by 2019; revisions of the options and transfer policy; high school boundary refinements; the establishment of the Joint Facilities Advisory Commission; approval of building designs by our board and the County Board for the Alice West Fleet Elementary School, the Wilson School, and Stratford Middle School; approval of plans to add a minimum of 1,300 additional high school seats with projects focused on the Ed Center and Career Center sites; approval and full funding from the county for our 2018 budget; approval of over 30 key leadership appointments, including superintendent, assistant superintendent, principals, directors, and most importantly, over 300 teachers and 200 school-based staff. Everyone in the community engaged with us as we undertook our work this year. We continued and will continue to grow and evolve our system. We worked hard to streamline planning processes and to provide more ways for students, parents, the community, everyone, to engage with us, to make your voices heard. Our decisions reflected your voices. Our decisions were better and stronger because of our work together. Our collective gumption got us through this, leaving us confident and strong. On caring. National trends filtered into our community. We found ourselves operating in an era of uncertainty and discord. Throughout this time of change, both nationally and locally, we here in Arlington continued our caring commitment to each other, to our students, to our families, and to our neighbors. Our board, this board, consistently reaffirmed through words and action our commitment to being a caring, supportive, inclusive, and welcoming community. We ensured that this commitment to each other is reflected in all of our updated board policies and in the administration of our schools. Being part of this caring Arlington community, its School Board and school administration, and upholding these values in all that we do is one of the best parts of this job. Thank you all for this continued commitment to being such a decent, honorable, and caring community and school system. Personally, I look forward to my continued work on the board, particularly related to instruction and the needs of students with disabilities and second language learners. I look forward to having time to get back out into the community, meet with more parents and more interested citizens, and to listen carefully and hear about what is important to members of this changing community. I want to listen carefully concerns within the school system and outside our system to determine how best to support our community and staff as we continue through this time of intense change. I very much look forward to this work ahead. Colleagues, Dr. Murphy, senior staff, APS staff, we got the job done as laid out in our three-to-five-year plan. Thank you. We are grateful for your hard work. Students, parents, members of the community, thank you. Your support has been essential. We have created a base from which we can now build and envision our system for the 17-18 school year and beyond. We have every reason to be confident and hopeful in our future. To everyone, thank you for your caring, your participation in this great community. I look forward to our continued work together, and I have truly been honored to have served you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Doren. It was truly a productive year. Let's go to our other colleagues on the School Board in order of seniority. Mr. Lander, would you like to make any comments today?
Good afternoon. This is always awkward because I remember 13 ELT members ago and nine board members ago, I was sitting where Ms. Tlento was, and Dr. Murphy has only been here six months. So we were both getting our feel. And I had an opportunity recently to speak to the students who were graduating from the Arlington Northern Virginia, not Arlington, the Northern Virginia Regional Detention Center and Juvenile Detention Center. And four of those students were Arlington students. And I spoke to them about time, and I also told them about mistakes. And so I explained to them, or the perspective of when you're sitting in a detention center seems like it takes forever. And when you get older in life and you sit on a board, time seems like it's never enough of it. You don't ever have enough time to do everything that you want to do. And so I think back on the past year, and I look upon it with amazement of what we have been able to accomplish collectively. And so I was going through all of the things that we have accomplished. It doesn't matter who gets the credit for it, but we've built new schools, we've lowered the graduation rate, we had more money and scholarships for our students, and we have instituted new innovative tools so our students evolve with their learning and our opportunity to engage with them. As we evolve as a community, I remember when I first bought my house, and I told my father we qualified for a $500,000 mortgage. He was like, "Wow, that's really great." I said, "Well, in Arlington, it only gets you one bathroom." So it's all about perspective. And so I approached this new year with the perspective of newness with my colleagues who all bring a different perspective, a newness of leadership. And I also thank, I want to thank the executive leadership team tremendously. Dr. Natchis, I'm talking about you, too. This is your first year. Because the work and the accomplishments that we do is essentially facilitated through all of your efforts. And we bark, sometimes we bite, but we appreciate sincerely the work you've done and you continue to do, your commitment, your late nights, even unfortunately when we go to 1:00 a.m. And we appreciate all that you do in directing and evolving. Dr. Wilks is going to transition from us, but your work and your contributions to the school system have not been small. And of course, Superintendent, we thank you for your leadership and your guidance. As we evolve from school system, as I often tell people, have grown 1,000 students a year from 19,000 students, just under 19,000 students when we, when I came onto the board to over 26,000 students. And that's a lot of children. That's a lot of staff, that's a lot of support. And why I have the opportunity, I want to thank my County Board colleagues for their support. They have evolved also. It was a totally different board, and we've accomplished a lot in partnership. I am going to thank Katie Crystal, Libby Garvey, John Veistat, and I'm going to give a special, special, special thank you to the second most handsome man in the room, Jay Facet, my buddy, because he will be transitioning along with me at the end of the year. And on a personal note, when I got involved with Arlington Politics, it was actually Jay Facet who I was on his cycle of running for office, and I learned a lot from him. And I thank you sincerely, my friend, for your guidance and your wisdom and your leadership. I have to make sure I also thank Mr. Frank Wilson, who was a mentor, continues to be a mentor, Dr. Wilson, Margaret, and Dr. Taylor, who continue to offer guidance. And I'm smiling now because I see Major Sillow, who was sitting up here at one point when I first got on the board, and telling me about all the things that we had accomplished when I got here. And I was telling her about everything we were going to accomplish when I got here. And now I sit here thinking, we didn't do too bad. We still got a lot more to do. We have a new evolution coming at Drew. We were able finally to transition the Montessori program at some point to a new building that's on the plan. We're building new elementary schools, new high school, a new HB Wood Lawn. We are recognizing the individuality of our students personally and educationally, which I think is so important. We continue to talk about achievement gaps, which frustrates me because students don't come and learn in groups of black and white. They learn as individuals, as we do as board members. And so it has been an honor to be in Arlington. My joke is always, this is a great party with a huge covered charge. So once we were able to get into this party, to be a part of the leadership team for a brief moment and make a contribution to, and impact positively, the future of our students means a lot and is very humbling. Also, if I had to list my most proudest moment, it is being part of a team that has been so progressive in their thinking and their ability and fearlessness not to fail, and being able to establish mentoring programs for our young men of color in our middle school, boys and girls programs. And I hope those things continue because our young people are getting mixed messages, and they're getting a lot of it at one time. And so they need help on how to decipher and how to think through those messages that they get. In Virginia, marijuana is still illegal, but across the river, it is legal to purchase it and to smoke it. And so those are conversations, unfortunately, that we have to have with our children about priorities and about making good decisions and not being trained, but being good thinkers and being able to take in information, analyze it, and figure out what's the best way forward. And as I always say, ask for help. Bad news doesn't age well. So the sooner you ask for help, the better off we are. And I will continue to ask for help these next six months. I will be focused, Dr. Natchis, on instruction, the Office of Minority Achievement, and ensuring that all of our students continue to read at grade level. I'll be working continually with Don Chadwick to make sure we continue to stay under budget on our projects. And then, of course, working with Dr. Murphy to make sure we continue to get quality folks into our school system. We have some people I think later we're going to recognize, I'm excited about that. This is a great school system. It's not broken. It's a fabulous school system. We have wonderful teachers. We're not perfect. We still have a long ways to go. But I wouldn't trade you guys for any beach in New Jersey or anyplace else. I think, I think I'll sunbathe right here under the lights of Arlington and enjoy the time I have left. I want to thank again Mark Schwartz, Libby Garvey, who was on the board when I first got here, and was one of the first board members I met as a parent when my daughter was at Jefferson. She was the liaison. Katie Crystal, John Veistat, who was a parent at Yorktown, I think, well, I think your kids were still, one of your kids was still in middle school at that point. Ow, they're gone. So it's been an evolution. Thank you. And again, I look forward to working with you all over the next six months. And with that, I'll transition to the next person.
Mr. Lander, and next, Mr. Goldstein. Do you have comments you'd like to make?
I do. Thank you very much. So first, I want to say thanks to my colleagues for their faith in my ability to carry out the Vice Chair's role successfully and in doing so that I pledge to be inclusive in both thought and action. And just briefly, my priorities this year will be focusing on our planning functions, on better communications with the community, and also showcasing for the community and highlighting the great things going on in our schools and our school system. But I want to spend the bulk of my remarks thanking and appreciating the work of our outgoing Chair in navigating the challenges of the past school year. So everyone knows, of course, the huge initiatives that we've successfully undertaken this year, the high school boundary change, options and transfers, policy revision, the 1,300-plus high school seats we just concluded at the last meeting. But bringing each of these to fruition has taken hundreds, if not thousands, of hours of planning, collaborating with the superintendent's staff, with legal counsel, with the community, and of course, herding her favorite group of cats, her fellow School Board members. We have had major work sessions on literacy, on personalized learning, on the One-to-One Device Initiative, and each of them required organization, planning, and communications, again, bordering on the hundreds of hours each. Of the myriad things that the Chair does, I want to, you know, point out a few that may not be known to everyone. The Chair plans and conducts a weekly meeting with another School Board member along with the Superintendent and his staff, who are leading that week's agenda items. Under her chairmanship, we've launched and promulgated the three-to-five-year plan and the Engage at APS Communications Mechanism that's on the APS website. As Chair this year, she has organized and stabilized correspondence from and responses to community letters and calls. She represents Arlington Public Schools during monthly leadership meetings with the County Board leadership and with the joint functions we've created with our County Board colleagues, the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee and the Joint Committee on Transportation Choices. She is the primary point of contact with the County Board and the County Manager, as well as being the primary point of contact from the School Board with our legal counsel, and this is particularly important, in light of the multiple policy revisions, the dozens and dozens of policy revisions we've undertaken this year and as part of our commitment to revise those policies. In addition, like the rest of us, she has In addition, like the rest of us, she has liaison assignments to schools, to civic associations, and to working groups and committees. And finally, and it's not finally because I've left out just a million things that she does, but of the ones I wanted to point out particularly, she has all of the ceremonial aspects of the chair's role to perform. So, I just wanted to say thank you to Nancy and to express my personal gratitude to our outgoing chair for her Herculean work this past year.
Thank you, Wade.
Okay, and Ms. Toledo, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, thank you. First, I do want to thank our outgoing chair. Her strong and committed leadership has really been something that has gotten us through a hard and contentious, challenging year, but a year with great success as well. And I am looking forward to our new leadership, Dr. Barbara Cannon, alongside her, Mr. Goldstein, because I think this year has set the tone for years to come. I do not foresee it getting easier. With that, I will note that I started in January, and as God often likes to do in my life introduction, he just throws me in full speed ahead. Within just a couple of weeks, we were dealing with immigration and the terror that our immigrant communities were living with here in Arlington. That was hard, and I want to thank my school board colleagues and my county board colleagues for the tremendous work that we did together, apart and together, to ensure that Arlington is a welcoming and inclusive community and that we advocate for all of our neighbors and our community. And we do it together, we do it as individuals, we do it as leadership. So, thank you for that. The experience I had being a board member and in leadership during that time was exceptional. And the guidance and advice that I received from my school board colleagues, as well as my county board colleagues, I want to say thank you. Thank you for that because coming in to new leadership role with the tremendous amount of work that all ten of us do for our community and being thrown into a time of division and contention was challenging, and I could not have done it without our team, both on the county and school board. I also entered a time where our students were feeling the political divide in our community. And whether I was going to get involved in the process and the details, I was not allowed to lose focus of what mattered most, our students. The courage that our students have shown this year, both our immigrant community students and our students who are sitting on two different sides of politics, was humbling and impressive. And it shows again the work that our county and school board does in leadership, APS leadership, to ensure that our students felt the strength and ability to have those conversations with us. So, I do believe that set the tone for the time to come because it was on the heels of a boundary change, and boundary changes we'll be encountering next year as well. Our budget was passed, and I want to thank our county board for supporting us in that, but I know that in future budget years, we may not have that ability. And so, moving forward, the few things that I will continue to focus on are support, focus, and continue to advocate for mental health awareness and education, and to ensure that we're providing that support to our students. Because again, I believe that we're going to continue to have times of stress and divide, and I hope to grow from that unity and success. And mental health awareness, education, and support is critical to the success of all of our students, regardless of your background, whether it be social class, or race, or gender, anxiety, stress, trauma. Our students face times that we didn't face when we were young necessarily, and it's through community support. I do believe it takes a village. So I will continue to advocate for that in all of our policy and future initiatives. I will continue to advocate for eliminating the gap. I want us to continue to focus on granular data and seeing our students as students and understanding the systematic issues that we have as a country so that we can address our students as students and ensure their success and their access to opportunities for all. And I also want to make sure that I will continue to focus on community outreach and specifically on outreach to our communities that don't always have a voice at the table. Those are one of the reasons I ran for school board. I wanted to bring different perspectives to the table so that as we move forward with policy decisions that affect every single person in Arlington, that all voices are here. And again, I want to thank my school board colleagues and my county board colleagues because I know that when those voices are brought, they stop and listen. And it's easy to get caught up in listening to the voices that are the loudest, which I am grateful for because they are the voices that really bring about a lot of the things that we can't always see or grasp or understand because we are working so hard behind the dais. But I still have yet to encounter a community member or leadership team member who has not stopped and listened. And I think that moving forward, we're going to be a great team. I think we're going to need to focus on our continuing collaboration, communication with our communities, engagement with our communities, and recognizing that we are living through challenging times, both economically and politically. And it's going to be our strong leadership and focus on what is best for our community that's going to get us through. So while we may weather some storms, there is some sunshine at the end, and I look forward to reaching that sun with all of you. Thank you.
Hey, thank you everyone for your comments, and I would especially like to say thank you to all of my colleagues for putting your trust and confidence in me this coming year. You are all passionate and committed to our students, families, and community, and I'm truly honored to work with you and to have this opportunity to serve. Mr. Goldstein, I look forward to working with you. I think we are going to make a strong team. Thank you to our outgoing chair, Ms. Van Doren. Much has already been mentioned about the hard work that you put in this year and that we all contributed to, but I will just second that point about your hard work and commitment. You displayed it every day. You put us in a good place. We are ready to move forward, and we had a productive year. Many thanks to the superintendent, our executive leadership team, and to all the schools, the school leaders, teachers, and staff in our system. You have all committed your lives and careers to our children. You make it happen, and I look forward to our ongoing collaboration as we continue to work together every day to support the whole child. Special thanks to our clerk, Melanie Elliott, and her staff, Claudia Mercado and Julianne Jones. And I would really like those two to stand for just a moment so we can all recognize We could not do our work without you. Thank you for supporting us. Yes, everyone agrees wholeheartedly. Thank you so much for supporting us in so many ways. Thank you to everyone in our audience today and to the community at large. Special shout-out to our colleagues on the county board. They've been named several times, but I'll go ahead and do it again. Thank you Chair Facet for coming, Vice Chair Katie Crystal, members Libby Garvey and John Weistat, as well as of course, the county manager, don't hide, Mark Schwartz. Thank you so much for coming. I see a number of other very active, engaged community members, especially with regard to our schools. Graham Weinschenk is here, the former vice chair of the Student Advisory Board. Judy Haddon is here, longtime former school staff and now longtime member of the Arlington Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families, as well as a number of other activities. One of my very best friends, is she still here? I know she was going to have to leave, Jessica Kaplan. Did she, is she here? Oh, she had to leave early. One of my best friends from Raising Our Children Together. Okay, and we have a number of incoming and current administrators that we will be acknowledging very soon. This is a room full of people who are dedicated to our schools, our kids, and our community. Finally, I'm so pleased to have my husband and son Fred here, right here in the front row. Mr. Lander, we could argue about the most handsome people in the room.
Well, I said second.
But, well, let's just say, let's, let's say, let's say third and fourth, and at least we're not arguing about the Nats and the Phillies today, so.
Wait till September.
Happy birthday to my husband Kevin. Sixteen years ago, in 2001, I walked my five-year-old son Fred to meet his kindergarten teacher, Mr. Bear, at Taylor Elementary School. Two weeks ago, I had the chance to hug our younger son Marcus on the stage at Constitution Hall as he graduated from Yorktown High School, and that completed our time as APS parents after sixteen years. I want to also thank my parents, my sister's family, and Kevin's family for all the support they've provided over many years. My family has inspired me, challenged me, and always, always believed in me. I'm a big fan of believing in people, especially our students. I believe in every one of them, and I believe in our teachers and staffs and the important role that they play in our students' lives every day. Our students' futures and our community's future are woven together, and our hard work in collaboration with the county board, our citizen advisory committees, and the community will be the key to making that future very bright. For many years, at the start of the Washington Nationals baseball games, the announcer would say, "It all starts right now." I'm always surprised how few Nationals fans there are in this, this school board building. I always expect people to know what that's, to, 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 yeah, yeah, there it is, there it is. But of course, we in Arlington are not in startup mode. We are continuing and building on the great work of our current teachers and leaders, as well as the work of many school and community leaders who have contributed to our system over many years. Arlington Public Schools are strong already, and our priorities this year will build on that strength. We as a board have worked together to commit to supporting and empowering our teachers and staff, to strengthening school, family, and community relationships, to developing a new six-year strategic plan to support the whole child and build a 21st century vision for teaching and learning. We're committed to developing new policies on inclusion and on technology use and personal devices, to continuing to address our student population growth by, everyone's favorite, making elementary and middle school boundary changes. Excited. Moving forward collaboratively on development of the Ed Center and Career Center sites, and planning for a possible fourth comprehensive high school. And finally, Mr. Facet's favorite, building a sustainable budget that will keep our schools and classroom learning strong during a time of continued student population growth. Our agenda is ambitious, but I am energized and optimistic. I'm looking forward to collaborating positively and constructively with everyone at this board table, our superintendent and executive leadership team, our clerk and office staff, our teachers, school leaders, parents, students, as well as the full community. Together, we will make Arlington Public Schools the best that they can be. Okay, and batting cleanup, Dr. Murphy, would you like to make any comments or announcements?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Cannon. Let me start by saying to Dr. Cannon and to Mr. Goldstein, congratulations on your new leadership roles on the school board. I look forward to working with both of you, as well as the rest of the board, Mr. Lander, Ms. Toledo, and Ms. Van Dorn, as we move into the upcoming school year. I also want to echo the comments that have been made this morning and thank Ms. Van Dorn for her leadership over the past year. It has truly been exceptional and enjoyable, and I appreciate it very, very much. Thank you. We've had a successful school year, the 2016-17 school year. Graduation rates are up. Student performance is also up, and our staff continue to lead instruction with a creative and unique learning experience all the way through the remainder of the year. And there were many exciting projects that actually happened at the end of the year that I was able to witness, and I want to thank our staff for that. Also, congratulations again to all our students and our families and our staff for this past year. We have an exceptional team made up of our executive leadership team here in front of me, our principals who champion their buildings, and our core of amazing, talented teachers. I'm also excited with the fact that we are going to be welcoming some new teachers and staff to this talent pool come August, and there are several appointments for new principals that we've made to date. So I'm going to caveat my comments to this point in the meeting. We are welcoming five new principals for the start of the 17-18 school year, and those include Brianna McLean at Ashland Elementary, Eileen Delaney at Carlin Springs, Judy Apostolika Buck, who's headed to Barcroft Elementary, Bridget Loft to Yorktown High School, and Brian Boykin to Williamsburg Middle School. By the end of this meeting, we will have our sixth principal appointment, and that individual is my recommendation, Renee Harbor to Swanson Middle School. But the board still needs to take action on that, and we'll be attending to that in just a minute. Board members have already mentioned some key priorities for the coming school year, and I want to just highlight some of our key instructional priorities. Those include maintaining and fostering our strong instructional team, which we've talked a lot about this morning, strengthening our professional learning opportunities for staff to individualize their needs and also professional interests, continuing to focus on Arlington-tiered system of supports to ensure we meet the individual needs of students, ensuring that we have options and choices for students so they can cut their own individual path to success, and as Dr. Cannon had mentioned, remaining focused on meeting the needs of the whole child. Our plans for the year ahead are packed with formulating a new strategic plan, making many decisions related to capital needs and projects, and supporting our instructional staff so that they continue to support children, ensuring that they achieve and receive the resources they need. To be successful, we need to continue to work closely with our staff, our parents. I also want to make note of the county board and the county manager. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, for being here today. I do appreciate it. I look forward to all these opportunities to make decisions that will ensure we maintain our excellent schools for our future generations. Now, I hope everyone's going to take this opportunity to continue to rest and enjoy the summer break so we're refreshed and ready to start our work with the coming of the new school year. And as Ms. Van Dorn has already mentioned, I want to encourage our students and our staff to use this time to READ, READ, READ. Enjoy the rest of your summer break, and thank you. Congratulations again, Mr. Goldstein and Dr. Cannon.
Thank you.[1671.13][1671.13](applause). Okay, we are now at Citizen Comment. Ms. Elliott, are there any speakers? We have just one business item today, and that is to approve our consent agenda. May I have a motion for adoption of consent?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five-zero. Okay, and as part of that consent agenda, as Dr. Murphy alluded to, we have made some fabulous new appointments that I'd like to recognize now. I would like to start, the scoop was already given, but with Ms. Renee Harbor, who is going to become the principal of Swanson Middle School.[1721.13][1721.13](applause). Ms. Harbor has 25 years' experience in education, of which 20 have been for Arlington Public Schools. During her time in Arlington, Ms. Harbor has served as middle school math and science teacher, an assistant principal at Swanson Middle School, and at the Arlington Career Center. Ms. Harbor is a nationally board-certified teacher who has a deep understanding of middle school philosophy, curriculum, and students. As an assistant principal at Swanson, she led the work of establishing PLCs, mentoring new and seasoned teachers, and working collaboratively with staff to support inclusion and co-teaching practices for special education and ESOL Hilt. During her time at the Career Center, she's been instrumental in working with leadership to build Arlington Tech, while also ensuring that the other specialized programs at the Career Center receive the same level of support and engagement, including the PEP Program, Hilt Academy, and Academic Academy. All of these experiences have created a firm foundation for Ms. Harbor to enter the principalship at Swanson Middle School. Each time Ms. Harbor has sought to gain a different experience to become a strong leader and supporter of teachers and staff, she has always looked for opportunities to return back to Swanson. back to Swanson, the community that she calls home. Do you have family here that you'd like to introduce quickly? Please do.
This is my husband, William Harbor, who is a fabulous teacher at Kenmore.
Aye.
My oldest daughter, Shayel Harbor, who's a graduate of Wakefield and now a Macala sophomore at Eastern Michigan University.
All right. Fantastic.
And this is my youngest daughter, Gabrielle Harbor, who is a rising fifth grader at Hoffman Boston.
Aye. And on a personal note, I've had the chance to get to know Ms. Harbor, as my own sons have been Career Center students. You will be missed. You're going to be fabulous as principal at Swanson, and I'm sure that we will do everything we can to make sure the Career Center has all the support. You have left some big shoes to fill, but we will do our best to do so. Next, we have Heidi Smith, who is going to become the assistant principal at Barcroft Ms. Smith brings 12 years of teaching experience to the position, with 11 of those years teaching at Hoffman-Boston Elementary School, and the last year serving as an academic support teacher under Title I in the Department of Instruction. Ms. Smith is a nationally board-certified teacher. In her work as an academic support teacher, Ms. Smith has worked closely with Barcroft Elementary teachers and staff over the course of last year to provide professional learning and coaching regarding APS's literacy curriculum work. She exhibits the interpersonal skills, professionalism, and dedication needed of one moving into the assistant principal position, and she will be a positive asset to the administrative team at Barcroft. Thank you so much, Ms. Smith. And do you have family or friends? Okay?
I have a lot of friends.
Okay. And next, we have a man I've gotten to know quite well, Mr. Hanson, Robert Hanson, who is going to become assistant principal at Jefferson Middle School. Mr. Hanson brings 20 years of experience as an educator, spending three years at Williamsburg Middle School as assistant principal and the last two years at Drew Model School. Prior to his work with APS, Mr. Hanson worked as a history teacher, an alternative education coordinator, counselor, and dean of students mostly for Fairfax County Public Schools. Mr. Hanson's middle school experience served the upper-grade students at Drew well in preparation for their transition out of elementary school. Returning to middle school, Mr. Hanson brings the elementary foundation, which will bring an added area of expertise to the Jefferson Middle School administrative team. Thank you so much. Congratulations to you. Any family, friends you want to introduce? Okay. Everyone here, yes, yes. And finally, Rebecca Erwin Kennedy, who will become the assistant principal at Randolph Ms. Kennedy brings 20 years of experience in education, of which six have been for Arlington Public Schools. She has worked as a reading teacher at Oak Ridge, serving as a literacy coach and English Language Arts lead teacher, and for the last two years, she has served as an assistant principal. Ms. Erwin Kennedy has an unwavering commitment to community engagement in the schools, and her ability to speak and write in Spanish and her literacy background will be a compliment to the administrative team at Randolph Elementary School. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Dr. Cannon, I would be remiss if I did not highlight, in addition to being a fabulous educator, Ms. Kennedy bikes from Maryland to Virginia every day. So Ms. Crystal and Mr. Fazette used to be my model for multimodal transportation, but Ms. Kennedy bikes from Maryland. That would be Rockville. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Three days a week. She only bikes from Maryland three days a week. So I take back all the kudos that I was giving you. I thought it was five days, but it's only three days a week. And now you have a little bit further to go from Oak Ridge over to Randolph, so we've got to get those bike lanes taken care of.
And anyone else to introduce? Okay. Last item on our agenda is new business. Is there any new business? If not, I believe our meeting will be adjourned. Board members, if you could stay for just a moment for a photo, please, and then we can greet our guests. Thank you. Once. And?